It's 5:30. I call our city council meeting to order. We have one councilman.
City Hall, capital C, capital H. One, two, three, exclamation point.
Let's go and start with how to. All right, we're gonna call ourselves to order. I'm gonna ask Councilman Ricky Thurman if he would lead us in the pledge. The pledge is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. As typical for our regular council meetings once a month, we ask the someone from the Missouri Orleans to come and leave an indication. Tonight's Ed Ditfer. And appreciate your coming tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, thank you, staff, thank you. The passing of Mr. Gilbert, I can't help but think about names like that. Mr. Gandy, Mr. Pollan from back in the day, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Henderson, and in my estimation, those of you council members, you're following in their footsteps. You're serving. Thank you for for serving. Thank you for making our community better, making it a place where we can draw leaders like Chief Harris that will soon be here two years. And recognize a team and drawing leaders like Coach Doty. So we appreciate all your efforts. Would you pray with me? Father, I ask you to bless the efforts of this council. I ask you to bless their investment of time, add back to their lives and their families and their sacrifice. We ask you to give them great relationships that are mutually blessing with the county and the district and the university and all these roles that have to intertwine. We just pray for your favor and wisdom in that area. I ask that you bless them, you keep them, you make your face to shine upon them, that you be gracious to them, that you lift your countenance upon them, and that you give them peace. I ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ed. Counsel, you have in front of you, we have a presentation I have out. Since it's a resolution, I'm gonna ask for a motion, a second, and a vote on adopting Resolution Number 2022 R-01, which is what you all signed a little bit earlier. Have a motion?
I make a motion, Mayor.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Thank you. It's time to do, this is one of the cool parts. I've made a lot of proclamations and resolutions to a group of body of people. There's a lot of weight in here today, a lot of big guys. I was hoping to stand back there so I could be taller than most of y'all, but I can't. Most of us here remember Sterling when he was about, how big? Yeah, something like that. And we saw him do some great things on the football field and other in life in general. And his mom and daddy did a great job of raising him. So we appreciate Sterling, what you've done for the city of Steenville, for these boys, and for Steenville High School, Steenville Elementary School District. I have a Resolution 22, 2022 R-01. I want to read it to you guys. I'm not gonna name all, write all your names off. You know, everybody here knows who you are, but I want to read the resolution. Whereas the Steenville High School football team, with a season record of sixteen and zero, won the Class 4A Division 1 State Title on December 17th, 2021, earning Steenville High School its sixth state title. And whereas this great accomplishment required determination, sacrifice, skill, dedication from the players, coaches, and athletic trainers, as well as support from their classmates and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the efforts and achievements of the Steenville High School football team are hereby recognized and applauded, and we the undersign, which is all the city council, on behalf of all the citizens of Steenville, Texas, wish to congratulate them for their hard work, positive representation of the city of Steenville on and off the field. And Coach, thank you very much what you did. Gentlemen, congratulations. Most of y'all were probably a little bitty the last time this happened in Steenville, Texas, and if you're even around, maybe, I don't know, maybe not. But y'all did a great job. Thank you for representing Steenville, Texas. I was in Colorado about three weeks ago. And I was sitting in a restaurant, hey, drinking some coffee, and a gentleman came in. He just sat down and said, where are you from? I said, Steenville, Texas. He said, y'all just won state championship. This is in Colorado. And so it's not something just recognized here, it's something recognized all over Texas and even in the United States. Y'all did a great job and we appreciate what you did in Steenville. You want to come say something to your?
I'll talk about these, this group of men any chance I get. Just a phenomenal group of young men. We knew they were gonna be special all the way back when we started offseason last year, and ever since our staff got here in Steenville. Just great kids, work extremely hard. We love every one of them. They love each other. It was a lot of talking about me, but we have a phenomenal staff of men that love these guys, that coach them hard and love them even harder and develop relations, relationships with them that are gonna last a lifetime. And this group set out to be district champions, and we checked that box, and now we're state champions, and we checked that box. So thank you so much to the city of Steenville, to the city of champions. We've got eleven now high school championships here in the city. Just got great things going on at Steenville ISD. It's a great day to be a Yellow Jacket and a Honeybee, and we're so proud of these guys. And I know they're gonna continue to win the day the rest of their life. They're gonna be great husbands, they're gonna be great fathers, and they're gonna be great community members here in the city of Steenville and all the way out in the world. So with that, thank you guys so much, and ruse on three. One, two, three.
Congratulations, man. It's always fun. Next item on our agenda is citizens' general discussion. It's an opportunity for citizens just to come up and address city council. If you got it, I have some people's names up here, they have particular issues they would raise. This is general discussion? Nope, items five and six. So anybody else want to say something in general to citizens in Steenville? Here you go, and we'll go on to the regular agenda item. And first thing is, I guess it's Steve? Or are you gonna do it, Alan, annexation?
Oh, I am. I'm sure.
Okay. Steve looked at me like he's looking at his face like, oh my gosh, what are you doing to me?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we were approached several weeks ago by the developer of the new tractor supply out on 281 requesting to be annexed into the city limits. We have received his, his request for voluntary annexation. We have worked out and agreed to a service plan, which is required by state law. It's coming to you tonight for consideration for, to bring it into the city limits. We are asking that, and it is within the ordinance, but when we bring it in, we bring it in as an industrial zoning. That is what the future land use calls for. The proposed use of the property is consistent with that zoning. Staff respectfully recommends that you approve.
You want to tell everybody where it is?
It's at the intersection, well, I guess it's really not an intersection. It's where Highway Eight runs into 281 next to Rocky Creek Builder. If you go out there now, you'll see the pad being developed, and they are working on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Alan?
Mr. Barnes, the normal procedure is for the annexed property to have the services extended to that. That's a part of this package, is it my understanding. We have water available in that area. Waste water is not available yet, but will be soon, we hope. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have agreed to, we have agreed to a waiver for the wastewater and allow them to have a septic system. Sorry, I'm getting feedback in my new hearing devices.
And the water service has been extended or will be extended to the far side of their property, correct?
That is correct, and I believe it has been installed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Here you go, and do I hear a motion? Or I have to have a public hearing, excuse me. It's, we're gonna enter in a public hearing. Would anybody like to kind of speak in favor or in opposition to the proposal? Here you go, and we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion to approve ordinance 2022 O-01. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item, consider approval of an ordinance. Well, that's what we just did. Okay, a new senior citizen center.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have gone out for bid with a request for proposals for the construction of a waste, of a senior center. Let me get the response. The base bid was a million, I believe eighty thousand dollars. There was a secondary bid. I mean, a, a, a bit, an add alternate for the addition of approximately another thousand square feet for the use of, as a city council chambers. That option is one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. After reviewing the, the response to the request for proposal, staff respectfully recommends the approval of, or the acceptance of the bid. The option two, the, the add all of the city council chambers, and authorize staff to begin negotiations for a contract for that building.
Questions?
The, the proposal is made site-specific, Mr. Barnes?
That is correct.
Is it possible to approve the construction and determine the feasibility of that site versus another at a future time?
It would be very unusual to do so.
Well, the reason I'm asking, we own a block in downtown, and the, the facility, if my measurements, and my measurements are not always right, because I'm not a surveyor, but it could be constructed on the backside of that lot, and then the front part, which contains the existing building, could be leveled for parking or whatever else we chose to do with it. It would provide the new facility and still keep it in the downtown area, which is a concern for some.
Mr. Attorney, would we have to rebid this?
Yes.
If it's site-specific?
The site has been laid out. And, and so we would have to rebid this.
So it is site-specific. That was my question.
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
The city council chambers.
Yes, sir.
Just discussion for reasoning for it, because we've had this, and it hadn't been in open. The reasoning for that is that would allow us, correct me if I'm wrong, that would allow us to then utilize this for office space for growing staff and positions that have happened while giving a big conference room area that could be utilized by the seniors. Am I correct?
Ninety percent of the time.
Ninety percent of the time, and the two times a month that we utilize this or multiple during budgets could be utilized as a, as the council chambers.
That is correct. That's, yes, sir. So that's the way it's been designed.
Anybody else? You have a question?
No, need address.
Okay. Here are no other questions, then we're gonna enter into a public hearing on proposal, request for proposal for the construction of a senior citizen center. And I have before me Brenda Jan Smith. Come up and give us your name, your address, and tell us what you're, if you're for or against, and explain yourself.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Smith, and I go by Jan. I live at 937 Mabulark Lane here in Steenville. I'm currently the chair of the senior advisory board. And I can't come before you today, honorable councilman, to say we're really excited and thrilled that y'all have taken the initiative to build a new senior citizen center. And I just want to share a short story. Today I had my heating and air conditioning serviced, and the gentleman that came in said his services primarily elderly folks. And he was sharing, I was sharing with him, he's from Granbury, so he was sharing for me what he likes about Granbury that Steenville doesn't have. We all have those stories. I came from Austin. There's a big, big difference in Austin and Steenville, but I still love Steenville. Anyway, he was talking about the downtown area, so I started bragging on what the city councilmen have done with the breaking of the road and what some of your future plans were. And then I went into the senior assistance center that y'all have moved forward with or are moving forward with. And he said, one of the things that he hears from the seniors out there is that they don't go to the senior citizen center here because it is in such poor, poor shape. So I've just come before you saying so proud that we're hopefully getting a new senior citizen center. So I'm in support of the work that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have any questions for Jan? Thank you for coming up and speaking to us tonight.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to speak in for or against the proposal? Here now, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to be approved of proposal.
Second. Motion is second. Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Picture your senior citizen. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Do we have to make a motion specific to which version of that we're picking? Are we picking the whole?
Do we have to make a?
Yes, sir. We, we do need to know if you want the add all.
Okay, so we made a motion. Now we're gonna have to, I guess we have to make another motion, override that motion. So which one are we gonna pick? The add-on, add-all?
No, I think you made a motion to approve.
Yeah, we approved, voted on it.
Self, not counting the addition. Now make a motion.
Okay, just make a motion, okay.
I make a motion to approve the addition.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Killen, how's deer hunting?
It was good. I enjoyed it. I appreciate it.
Just to give you an idea of how hard he works, how many times did I text you and call you while you were on vacation?
Well, it wasn't too many, sir. You can text me anytime or call me.
I appreciate that.
So with the advice and encouragement of some of my coworkers, I've made a resolution to be a little quicker at the podium this year. So I only have one case tonight, but historically speaking, my resolutions don't really last too long, so next month may be completely different. This is case RZ 2021-019 and RP 2021-008. It's from Dr. Causey, and he is requesting a rezone of property at 940 Harbin Drive from R1, single family, to R2.5 integrated housing. The commission convened on December 15th, and by a vote of four to three, recommended the city council deny the rezoning request. Mayor used to, and council used to remind you and to point this out to the audience, the ordinance does allow a simultaneous consideration of a rezone and a replat, which is what we're requesting tonight. And so if the rezone is approved, the replat can also be approved. Replat is in your packet, and it does meet the requirements of the replat. If it is not approved, then it would, the replat would subsequently also be denied. In your packet also, we have the maps showing the current zoning, the future zoning, and the water utilities and sewer utilities for the property. And at the public hearing at PNZ, there were eight people that spoke in opposition of the request. And so I believe we have some of those folks here tonight that would also like to speak on that subject. And of course, we have the Dr. Causey here as well. So again, the, the recommendation from PNZ was four to three, recommending denial.
Recommend denial. So we would be identifying both, what we vote on simultaneously, both of them, or wanted the replat and then the rezoning?
I believe if you vote to deny the rezone, then the
replat doesn't matter. So we'd need to vote on the rezone first then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
Steve, if I'm looking at the zoning map correctly, the current and future land use surrounding this property on all sides is R1. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Even across Harbin, it's still R1?
That is, yes, sir, that is correct.
And the future land use continues that R1 zoning?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Here you go, and we'll enter into a public hearing, and we have several people who want to speak. I'm just gonna call them off the top of the list. Darla? Say your, give your full name and address.
I'm Darla Fant, and I live at 960 Lydia. The replat of the two lots would be directly across the street from me. And I'm worried about the changes in the neighborhood because I consider our neighborhood what we want every neighborhood in Steenville to be. Most of our street is older people, younger than me, but older, you know. And, but we have walkers. You know, our neighborhood is walkable, you know, and has no congestion. You can get down our street without taking turns, you know. There's, all of the streets, I think, or a lot of the streets, I should not be inclusive, in Steenville are too narrow to really park on both sides and still have traffic flow. You know, especially the areas that are zone multi-family. I'm really worried about how those, that area is gonna develop, but that's for another day. You know, so I am against this. I mean, I'm for denial, I guess is the way to say it. But the basis of that, I had never been to a planning and some meeting. I'd never been involved in that. And so I had to do my homework. I'm a detailed person, so. And what I came up with, or what I, my assessment is replating this And what I came up with or what I, my assessment is replating this is directly opposite of the goals of rezoning. You know, I see two main goals for rezoning. One is, you know, the basic management principle of uniting or looking at units of, units as a whole and managing units as a whole, rather than manage things individually, you know. You've got a neighborhood that you're managing as R1. You're throwing in a 2.5. And as Alan says, there's nothing close to it that's 2.5. So you're going to be managing that completely separately. The other thing is the purpose of zoning is to create cohesive, you know, compatible neighborhoods. And, you know, the big issue for Stevensville to deal with is how we manage students and permanent residents. I've got 12 grandchildren, all between the ages of 21 and 30, all have gone to college. We spend the last 10 years on college campuses and in college towns. And my concern is, you know, we're not doing as well as most college towns are in that integration. And it's hard. I worked at Tarleton. We had lots of student workers. I understand very, I lived and breathed managing students, you know. It's different. They're fun. I like students. But I would never tell you that managing a student or managing anything related to students is going to be the same as managing adults. You know, they just don't have the experiences, you know, that. So the other thing I looked at, someone told me that in the past, spot zoning had not been supported, you know, by the city council. And I will say, in looking at the zoning map, I could only see two areas that I would call spot zoning for multi-family use. And they're both over, oh, by the Brunner area. And the difference in those two is they're very close to, they're not adjacent, but they're very close to a multi-family, a 2.5 area. You know, close enough that my question was why they didn't extend that area rather than do that spot zoning. You know, this section is not close to anything else that's 2.5. So my basic concern is you're making a mess, you know, instead of fixing something. The last thing I'd ask for is, as you vote, I'd like to hear your reasons if you're voting yes. Because, not that I want to put you on the spot, but I don't understand the rationale. And I don't think anybody in my neighborhood understands why you would consider that, you know. So any information you can give us would be appreciated. Fair enough.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Darla? Thank you, ma'am. Also, Bill Leverton? State your name and address.
Good evening, councilman.
By the way, I just want to say we have three minutes.
Oh, good, thanks. My name's Bill Leverton. I live at 950 North Harbin Drive. I think number one is my main reason for not wanting Dr. Kozzi to get to split his property in half is I think both of us should have to mow an acre and a quarter for the rest of our lives for pennies we're living. My main reason, so. He shouldn't get out of that just because of this. I would like to say to you, however, that the historical conformity of the neighborhood, I think, is important thing to think about. And I do oppose his idea respectfully, and that is, again, the historical conformity of the neighborhood has been R1. So when you purchase into a neighborhood, you have an expectation of it to look a certain way, or feel a certain way, and be a certain way. So at some point in time, if you change that in the midstream of it, even though this is an older neighborhood or a neighborhood that's well-established, then ideally, you're going to change the identity of that through this spot zoning. I'm not necessarily against or for spot zoning, but I think in an established neighborhood that has historical conformity to a certain way, then ideally, you're changing that completely. And the complexity of that has, in my opinion, no doubt but to deplete the value of the property, even if it's a perceived value, because I no longer want to buy into a property that has a certain look, feel, and look to it, as opposed to the way it had before, if that makes sense. And the next thing is, I think that, I think when you look at the best use and historical best use of a piece of property, I think it's our idea to lift that up and to continue the trajectory of something to go best use. And I feel like this is not a best use. It would be a substandard use of it. And I feel that, that, that by, well, I hate to say this, but by, by reducing that standard of it, then at that point, you're inviting another depletion of property value, at least a stagnation. I think then, lastly, I think the thing you have to look at is opening something of a Pandora's box, because there are three other pieces of property that are vacant on that block currently that would be susceptible to that R2.5. Now, keep in mind that that would add somewhere between a minimum of 19 cars and a maximum of 36 cars on that square block. And there's no way that that, that, the city planners could have planned for that amount of volume on that road, whether it be parking or travel, whatever. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, what did I just do? Here we go. Kenneth? Just state your name and address.
My name is Kenneth Carlton and I'm at 920 North Lydia, across and one house over from the proposed site, the rezoning. A lot of my concerns would have been voiced, so I won't go back over from the traffic problems and the safety concern for the rezoning. Dr. Cousy has expressed he, he thinks he doesn't want to cause the neighborhood any harm. But the fact is, once he sells that land, that decision is out of his hands. And if that land is sold, you'll more than likely sold to a developer, the developer more than likely will want to give the maximum money income from that land. And the way to do that is put the maximum number of units of housing on that land. And so we're, we're down to the problems of traffic and safety and conservative, what had been mentioned. So as a result of these issues, I respectfully request that the rezoning initiative be declined.
Any questions for Kenneth? Thanks, sir. We have another. Scott? Oh, Mike!
I was writing that into her.
He sure did. My goodness. It was like, M.C.
Thank you. Mike Scott. I live at 1131 North Lydia. I'm the next block to the north of this area. First thing I want to do is I want to thank each and every one of you who are sitting up there, because you guys have a hard job. And I greatly appreciate your time and your effort to try to make Stevensville the best that it can be. I have a history in public education. I've sat through hundreds of meetings like this. And, and I understand what you're going through. But from, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your service. As Mr. Carlton said, it's pretty well all been said. But what I would like to do is I would like to represent the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not a part of that, but for many years, I served the city as the director of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Advisory Committee. And I understand the work that goes into those committees and that you guys lean on those committees for the work that they put in. And you, you hope that they are going to come back to you and they're going to give you the best advice possible. And so I'm going to say at this point in time that I'm going to charge you to follow their lead. Don't negate the work that they have done. The final thing that I'll say is the corner down there at Frye in Lydia can be very treacherous right now. Trying to cross Frye, trying to turn on to Frye, whatever you're trying to do there, it can be very treacherous with cars parked in front of houses there, you know, it's in and out. If we add more to that by, by multi-family dwellings, which would, would mean multiple more vehicles, I think that you're just asking for more trouble. So, once again, thank you guys for what you do. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions for Mike? Thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming. We have one other person who's requested, Debbie Doris?
Yes.
She'll state your name. Before you leave, I'd like for you to get Stacy and fill one of these out so we can have record here. State your name and address and make your comments.
My name is Debbie Doris. I live at 1111 Lydia. I am a foreigner. I don't live across the street. I don't live next door. What has been said so far, I definitely agree with. I'm opposed to this move, but not because of what you think. I think, number one, that citizens deserve the security of zoning regulations when they invest in a property. Now, from Henderson to Chamberlain, that area in there, that's all R1. Those are single-family homes. And a little bit of my background, obviously, I grew up here. I was gone for 38 years and then I came back. And I have been questioning some of the things that our planning and zoning board have proposed and have done. Not all bad, but I also think there, if you don't pay attention to what you're doing, there can be, in this specific case, a recklessness where you do open a window to change a neighborhood. And that's not what you want. I was a commercial designer for 38 years, well, semi-retired. And I did a lot of huge projects and I was active in urban planning. And with that experience, I have seen, there's a lot of talk of mixed zoning, mixed uses, changing the look of the neighborhoods and everything. But I'm going to tell you, this is not a new phenomenon. It's been around for 30 or 40 years. It's just now migrating to us. The distinction that you, as the chamber members, need to make in your decision-making is, mixed use does not mean plopping in something completely different from what the rest of the neighborhood is. What it means is, as your town grows, as things change, you provide areas designated that are constructive to help support those areas. Mixed use, whether it be a corner grocery store, the doctor's office, whatever the logistics are. So I don't want you to get this instance confused and say, oh, yeah, we need to go this direction, because that's not right. And there have been studies after studies after studies made that say mixed-use zoning, if not properly planned and developed, are disastrous. So, in that, I think it's, you know, it's hard for us, I'm the foreigner down the block from this area, but I think, you know, when somebody invests in a home and when they purchase that property and it is zoned R1, they expect those mortgage payments to uphold that R1 zoning. Whether there are new families, retired people, educators from Tarleton, you know, whoever, those are just really important factors. And I think if, if you look through my eyes, I can see this area years down the road being a neighborhood that will completely change its complexion. I think someday, this will be a neighborhood where young starter families will grow, because where they were raised, parents have passed away, the homes either are sold or inherited or whatever. But it's a perfect area because of the composition, the schools, downtown, business, healthcare providers. We want to keep that zone intact. We don't want to destroy it right now. Now, 30 years from now, may be a completely different story, but today, that's not where we're at. And I have not seen any massive studies or investigation on why you would want to change the complexion of this neighborhood. So, I hope that y'all will comply. I took this off of the website because I only heard about this yesterday. The planning and building department's goal is to make Stevensville safe, reliable, and attractive. When you put a different facade next to a home, you're changing the attractiveness, the cohesiveness. But they're supposed to provide safe, livable, and attract, and attractive by promoting orderly growth and development. So that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see a master plan. And I think that's where this could be accomplished. I assure you, I'm not opposed to townhouses. I have seen very successful neighborhoods in the metroplex that have incorporated them. We need them. We need them bad in this town. We do need a mix. But we're also very lacking in single-family homes at the moment. And so when you start disrupting a pretty solid neighborhood, then you're disrupting that when your need is greater for other things.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's what I have to say.
Don't forget to fill out your form over here, if you don't mind. Anybody have any questions for Debbie?
I would like to make a comment.
All right. Not right now, ma'am. She'll have a form for it. You've already had your 30 minutes. Woman, you want to say something?
I really appreciate the opportunity to address you and I also value your time. I'm a member of the Board of Adjustment. I have been for over a decade and I'm currently the chair. There's a good chance I would have just gone ahead and create, tried to replat and resurvey at R1. But I'm also the chair of the Board of Adjustment that would hear the variance that would allow that nine or 10-foot variance on the, on the property if I were to have tried to rezone it according to that. I've heard in the, in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, people say, if it was R1, I would have been okay with it. I would have been okay with R1.5 if that's what you had proposed. But the reality is, is I went before the city to Steve Killen and said, this is what I'd like to do. I'd like to chop the property that I own right now with my wife PJ, also known as Birdie to a lot of you. And I'd like to stop having to mow that one part of our yard. I'd like to make some good use of it. And if you could ever just see that, that property, it's tremendous. It's got a long width to it and it's got some depth to. This kind of wonky property at. this kind of wonky property that we own, where the house is right smack dab in the center between Harbin and Lydia. And so, the way that we talked about it, and then I got a surveyor to look at it, there would still be, from Harbin back to the house, and then beyond that, of course, the backyard, would still have that integrity of what this house looked like for the last 100 years. Well, not 100, since 1961, I should say. But it is an old neighborhood, and those three houses there, the corner house where there's the Buffalo in front, my house, and the house that now the Levertons are in, that's a very strange, but, you know, really special little section there. But it has been altered in the last few years. And so you've seen that house on the corner of Frye and Lydia. You've seen the house behind the Buffalo house get kind of re-segmented. So all I'm doing is saying, I'd like to make some use of this land that's, at the moment, not going to use at all. And so, I have a few things to say about that. It's a tremendous piece of property. We've owned it for about five years. And I'd like to just make some use of that property. Two, I'd like to say, none of us like taxes, none of us like death, none of us like change. But change is coming. And I've heard some key words like master plan, foreigner, complexion, facade. It's, that just throws me a look at the wrong way. Things are going to change. And it's not like Pandora's box is going to open to this kind of slippery slope problem of these straw man arguments that are being made that somehow by opening to 2.5, it's going to just alter everything and make everything go downhill. The thing about it is, 2.5 wasn't even created until September 2021. That's not even four months ago, right? So to act like there's some comprehensive plan that 2.5 doesn't fit into is disingenuous. It's not even, it's just, it's not relevant because 2.5 didn't exist. It was created for this kind of development, so that there could be opportunities. Not just for, it could be a single-family home, but it could be a condo or it could be a duplex. Third, we've got to proceed with some growth. When people talk about property values going down across the board, tax rates and all the tax rate homework that I've done doesn't bear that out. The tax rates are going up because our property values are all going up. So you can't predict what hasn't been the case. Four, I like all of Lydia and all of Harbin. But when you cross Frye and there's lovely families that direction, and you go towards the Loop, there are lovely families in that direction. But there's this kind of mentality that there's this special 500 yards that just is sacrosanct and should never be touched. And that's the way it's been for seven years. And I just would beg that we can change that mentality. One of five, my neighbor recently put in a driveway. Change is coming. He knows it. He's preparing. So why can't I? I'd like to make change happen in my backyard as well. Oftentimes, six, we're all, you know, united in some of those things that we don't like. But one thing we all definitely like is freedom. And I'm just asking that we can make use of my property in such a way that is valuable to the community. I'm not just reaching out to kids who are at college who are going to try to trash a rent house. That could happen anywhere. That could happen with an R1. That could happen with an R1.5. Instead, if it's done well, the 2.5 can be a valuable piece of property for me or a developer to change that into single-family. But it doesn't, just because someone can come in and make it into a duplex doesn't mean that it's going to be a bad thing. And then finally, I'd like to just say that I will have to come back. It's so expensive to make these kinds of changes, to ask for these kinds of changes. Just asking costs about $1,000. And so, if you make me come back and ask for it to be 1.5, that could be three pieces of property right there replanted. At R1, it would be one property. But I'm asking that you grant this request this time. And then finally, the last time I went, when I did come before the PMZ, which I do honor their work and their expertise, it was a four-to-three decision. So in spite of the fact that there was a few more people more vocal than the lone voices in PJ and me, it still almost passed. And a four-three vote was said, it was said, let's give it to the City Council to make a decision. And I want you to know that I am not trying to disrupt anything. I just want to make use of my land. And I think you all can respect and understand that. Finally, I'd just simply like to say Matthew 22:36 to 40 says, what's the greatest commandment? It's to love God with all your heart, soul, and mind, but also your neighbor as yourself. I have never been anything but loving to my neighbors. And if anything, I've seen some kind of unfriendly, unloving energy in my direction. But this is coming out of no desire to hurt my neighborhood, but to only make use of the land and try to make some changes. We did this 2.5 in the city not to make things worse, but to be able to make use of places like this in the community. And that's what we have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have questions for Moomin? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Yes, sir. Just state your name. I need you to fill out a form at the end. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Brady Billings. I live at 970 North Lydia Street, which is the household where he's at. As last meeting, I stated I'm totally opposed to it. I'm not interested in additional cars on the road, additional smaller houses there. It's a good neighborhood the way it is. It's a little fast sometimes down the road, but I'm totally opposed to it. And it's not consistent with R1 zoning, and I can imagine it being improved.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor or opposition? Here now to close the public hearing, and we'll look at a motion and motion. First will be to rezone.
Mayor, we deny the rezonance request.
Okay, Brady. Further discussion?
Mayor, the motion was to deny.
Deny.
Deny, okay.
And Birdie, PJ, I'll just tell you guys real quick why. I know you want to hear why. And I agree that change is coming, and nobody advocates for change more than I do probably. But I'm sorry, just in this location where you guys are at, you own a beautiful property. It's a beautiful location, beautiful home you have. I just can't, me personally, perceive putting anything else other than single-family housing there. And I know it's your property, and I respect your property rights completely. But I just think that's an area of town that's got to stay single-family, no matter what the conditions are. So that's my personal opinion.
And I'll explain myself as probably one of the people that got 2.5 to even come into existence. 2.5 was created to protect neighborhoods, but in larger segments, in my opinion. I can't see this changing to a 2.5. And my reasoning being because it's never spot zoning. I hear spot zoning. 2.5 is going to be spot zoning wherever it is because it is brand-new to Moomin's point. But one of the areas it's been used for was an area that was basically an old block within the city that was touched by R3 in a spot, in spots. And this was a way to not have more apartment complexes, but to have townhomes that are very attractive. If you go right back over here and look in some of this area, they're great. But it's an area, not a lot within other lots. So answer some of those questions that we had, because this is a new thing. It will be felt out in different areas. It will be, you know, as we move forward and make planning, it will be part of the use within the city. But in my opinion, this is an R1 all the way around. There's no R3 anywhere around it. And so I won't be supporting it.
Anybody else?
I'll just, to add to them, the only other thing I would say about the 2.5 is I think it was kind of designed for areas that are in the midst of redevelopment right now. And that area is one that's just not. It's been single-family. It's still single-family, mostly owner-occupied in that area. Larger homes and larger lots. So the 2.5 would just, would greatly change that one little spot of that neighborhood. So that's why I can't support it.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Mayor, and to address you, Moomin, I would not support the change in this either. And it's because it's a little early. Debbie mentioned 30 years from now, you know, it's likelihood that everything's going to change. Well, it may be 15 years from now, maybe 10 from now. But right now, it's single-family from Frye Street North for sure. Most of them are owner-occupied homes. South of Frye Street, there are a lot of rentals all the way down. That's a little bit different concept there. But north of Frye Street on Harbin, they're nearly all that. And they're all, and it's all zoned correctly, R1. And I agree with Brandon and the other councilmen here that 2.5, why it was developed, why we asked Planning and Zoning to review it, and then why this council approved it. It's so that we could have a lower density rather than apartment complexes everywhere and in those particular areas. And it was a protection-type thing. This, however, it wasn't meant for single lots, I don't believe. And I think that's what we're looking at in this particular instance. So I believe that, along with Brady and here, that the correct use of this property is R1 in maintaining that at the present time.
Anybody else? Hearing none? I have a motion and a second. See to vote all in favor. Then a motion is to deny the request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
I'll remember that when I come back and ask for R1. I'll remember that.
There you go. All right, next item, financial reports.
Mayor, Council, this is the financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2021. We're two months into our fiscal year. It's a pretty decent start. For property tax, we received $447,000 in November, resulting in $243,000 or 36.98% increase over funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's 13.27% of budget, which is about 4.5 more than I anticipated. For our sales tax, we received $816,000 in November, which is $188,000 or 14.24% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's 20.63% of our $7.3 million budget, which is about 2.81% higher than we had anticipated. The target budget for operating revenue is $4.2 million. We received $5.3 million fiscal year to date, resulting in $1 million over our target budget due to property taxes, sales taxes, service charges, and other income. The target budget for operating expenditures is $4.2 million. We expended $3.4 million fiscal year to date, which is about $800,000 under our target budget. The operating revenue received last year was $4.2 million. Compared to the $5.3 million, it's $1.16 million increase, which is due to property taxes, sales taxes, our franchise taxes, hot funds, service charges, and other incomes. The operating expenditures last year were $3.7 million compared to the $3.4 million currently, which is a $340,000 decrease, of which about $260,000 relates to the repair of the public safety building in the prior year that obviously didn't continue this year.
On the budgetary comparison for expenses, is there just maybe some POs that had come in yet?
At the beginning of the year, we tend to get on to a slow start with some of our projects and things of that nature. And we have some of our computer software maintenance agreements and things like that are on annual basis, and they come a little bit later in the year, so.
Okay. So you don't anticipate that to hold?
Well, we, some of it will. Just, I mean, because we ended the year last year probably about $1 million under budget. So a lot of this has to do with some of our vacancies. We've had several key positions that have been vacant for the last two months that were already budgeted. So some of that has to do with some vacancies as well. And so that just, I mean, it just ends up being a true savings.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jeff Sanford. Who is the Kuntuishian guy that he wore black all the time?
Johnny Cash.
I thought you were going to bring your hat up.
I could, but out of respect, I'll leave it on.
Another good-looking hat up here, though.
Sir?
There's another good-looking hat up here. Don't mix them up.
Oh, I know. He's always looking good.
He does.
He pulls it off better than I do.
He does.
Happy New Year. A lot of people pull off things. Who remembers what was going on in 1863? Yeah, two years old, so you'll remember. Well, just so you remember, and you probably would remember, on 1863. Maybe a different kid, but who knows? It was on this day in 1863 that the four-wheeled roller skate was patented by James Plimpton of New York. I thought, Mayor, since you're a big roller skater, I thought that would be something you'd be appreciative of.
It was on my right knee.
Exactly. And also on this day in 1954, Elvis recorded his first demo for Sun Records. You may not know what it was. It was, "It Wouldn't Be The Same Without You" was the song. And I say that only because this last year, it wouldn't have been the same without you guys and the work that you did. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the citizens of this great community for the work that you've done to help progress this community in great ways. The numbers are showing it. Almost every time, I like to follow Monica and hear all the great things because virtually every month for the last several months, you get to hear the increased sales tax and increase other forms of revenue that are coming in and helping the city. And plus, the great management by you guys has kept you under budget on the expense side, and we appreciate that as well. I'm not going to, I thought for a while, I gave two presentations today. That's the hat. I always give presentations in my cowboy hats. So I was going to give part of those, but instead I decided to start, and since it's January, start off on a bigger scale with Texas and make sure that you and the citizens know some of the facts about Texas. And then I'll segue into what we're doing. First of all, Texas is the ninth-largest economy in the world. So if you think about that, it's been even higher on that list. Of course, countries have gotten bigger and combined and so forth. So it's the ninth-largest economy in the world. The number-one U.S. exporter for 19 years in a row at $276 billion this last year. There are 14 million people in the Texas civilian labor force. Graduation rate, we had our kids in here earlier, one of which was mine, so that was cool. And like a normal kid, he didn't give me the time of day. But that's okay. You blame him, right?
We noticed it.
No, we're very proud of him and all the other ones. Most of them sit in our house throughout the course of the year. 90% graduation rate in the state of Texas. It's among the top five, highest in the nation, which is important because we're graduating kids that are going out in our workforce, which is something that we'll also address this year. It's the leading destination for companies relocating from other states. We have 27 commercial airports, 11 interstate highways, 46 freight railroads, 16 seaports, 32 foreign trade zones, 624 miles of coastland. One of the great things, of course, is no personal or corporate income tax. It's the largest energy-producing state in the nation. The number-one job creator in the nation from 2010 through 2020, just under 2 million jobs created net. And we are home to 49 Fortune 500 company headquarters, not just companies, but headquarters. Lastly, we led the nation in high-tech exports for the eighth consecutive year at $44.8 billion. What we're seeing, though, is that Texas is not just known here with all of us. That's okay. I thought somebody was congratulating us. It is also known across the nation. And what's cool about that, and something to think about, is that's how we're approaching Stevensville. Stevensville is not just to be known for us here in this room and around our town. It's to be known across the nation and across the world. So our strategy this year has changed somewhat. It's actually just elevated to be in a position, marketing-wise and everything else, to be known across the entire nation. We're getting a lot of help from Tarleton. I got in two occasions in the last little bit, people have been calling me. I've told you once before that I had someone from North Carolina, one of our developers, call me one day during football season and tell me that he was watching us play McNeese State, I believe it was, on a Saturday on television. That's pretty cool. Just a few weeks ago, I was with another developer out of Dallas. He said, guess what? I was flipping through, saw us playing Gonzaga on TV and basketball. Tarleton has a big deal here because every time Tarleton's mentioned, of course, Stephenville's mentioned. And what does that do for us? It starts to give us a reason to want to have something great here each and every day. So we're doing this on a day-to-day basis. We're reaching out and saying, how can we be the big guns across the state of Texas? Whenever we read these great little facts and everything here, we need to also be thinking about, what are those facts for Stephenville? And how are those going to show not just how it has its been, but how it's going to be each and every month from here forward? So my reports from here forward are gonna show you how we're doing that. And they're also gonna show you how it's making an impact across and beyond the borders of our four walls of Stephenville. So I thank you for that. Thank you for the work you're doing. Look forward to working with you in 2022.
I wonder if Johnny ever sang that at Storms in Hamilton before he recorded it. Who knows? Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions for Jeff? Okay, next item is consent agenda or motion?
Mayor, so may.
Motion is second. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent is accepted. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have a council work session on Thursday, January the 13th. We have committee meetings on the 18th of January. And the filing period for a place on the May 7th ballot is January 19th through February 18th. So there you have it.
Mr. Turfey.
Well, Pastor Ed already left. He brought up that we lost a great man from this community, Mr. Gilbert. He, I was actually, I'll just show my age here. I was the first sixth grade class to be at Gilbert Intermediate. So his wife was my teacher. They're just a huge part of this community, along with Mr. Gandy, who we unfortunately lost over the holiday break also. And, you know, there's those of us that have been here for years and years. And those leaders are the ones that I think I myself strive to, try to live up to those footsteps that they have done and be a part of the growth of this town and make their, make people like that proud. So I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday and was a great state game. Loved that, loved having them here tonight. And that's it. Congratulations jackets.
Just congratulations to, to all of the participants in the Eret County Junior Livestock Show sale, or show going on right now and then the sale Saturday. So if you get a chance to go out and support those kids, please do so.
Darren?
Congratulations to the Stephenville Yellow Jackets and their state championship. It was great to have them here tonight, see Coach Doty and all his other coaches. And I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. They came out to speak for or get something. That's an important part of the process. We appreciate you coming out.
Brady?
No comment.
Congratulations to the Jackets and Happy New Year. And buckle up for 2022, because we just added another project with the senior center this year. And there's a lot of big things happening in Stephenville, so it's gonna be a great year.
Well, I'm gonna say congratulations also. I said it to Sterling and the team, and I'll say it again. It's, it's really enjoyable to watch a team like that. And it's, it's gratifying to have a number of citizens come to the council. I wish we could have positive input in, on as many different issues as we deal with. And I don't consider this to be negative input, but generally, if it's in my neighborhood, I take a greater interest in it. I'd like to see people take a greater interest in things that are going on citywide and, and participate more and take more of a role and play more of a role in the decisions that are made. We represent y'all, and we try to make decisions to do that as well as we can. But sometimes because we don't hear from you, we don't know what you want or maybe don't want, or what you would prefer. And, and having the input is a positive thing for us. And you don't have to come to the meeting. All of us have phones. We all receive emails. We, you know, there's many ways to communicate. There's a lot of people communicate with me at church or at the grocery store or the restaurant, and you'd be surprised at the things I hear at Jake and Dorothy's, but that's neither here nor there. But thank you for coming. Thank you for participating. And I look forward to continuing to, to help the city grow and, and seeing the positive things happen that we are having right now.
Gerald?
Hi. What else can we say? I mean, congratulations to the Jackets. It was wonderful going over to AT&amp;T Stadium and, and watching them play. But what was more than the win, I think, and the win was, was, was wonderful to see, is to see maybe 10, 15,000 fans from here supporting kids. That's pretty neat. I mean, gosh, that was a huge crowd. It was, it was nice to see that. So congratulations to them. It took a very short period here today for this council to take a major step, and that's to build a new senior center. That is, the existing senior center, by the way, has been around now for 60 some odd, 60 some odd years, you know? There was a lady here, the name of Lucille McCleskey, that was the spearhead behind the senior center. And her husband was the president of Farmers First National Bank for a long time. And she, she kinda started the senior center. And it has been the same and hasn't been changed much in the last 60 years, as a matter of fact. A little maintenance here and there. It needed to be replaced. We all knew that. This council presented it to the voters a year ago, and the voters turned that down as part of the overall package. We were able, because the economy has been good and collections, tax collections have been good, we were able to save money and to set that money aside because we knew that that needed to be done. And we took that step to do that tonight. And that's a very positive thing. It's a good thing for this community. And I hope we can follow up on all of those things in the future. And I'll say what I've said before. If you like 2021 as far as how this community is doing and what has been accomplished, you're gonna love 2022 and beyond because there are some really good things that are gonna come about. So with that, thank you, sir.
Darren?
Congrats to the Yellow Jackets. It's kinda cool to see guys that you went to school with come back and be coaches and win state championships. Some of them even younger than me. It's really, really pretty cool to see friends come back and make a difference in their community and, and win the ultimate prize for, for a lot of those guys. He's, he's winning championships, but Sterling and, and his coaches are, are making a lot of great men, which is, which is a lot more important in the end game. So congratulations to those guys, those guys. A new senior center, I think, should be on the front page of the newspaper tomorrow. We didn't increase your taxes to do it. We utilized sales tax money and revenue that we've been put aside to pay for it with cash. We're utilizing that money to make your life better. And to me, that's what, that's what a role is to do. And so I commend everybody up here that came up with this idea, that worked this idea, worked it through the, the senior advisory board and, and their, their work on it. And it's pretty cool. It's gonna, it's going to give, give the seniors that have needed a new place something really special and really neat. And it's going to allow for a part of town that has a, a building that is outdated and, and to be changed and to be something vibrant within our downtown community. So I'm excited to see what happens there. And the last thing I say at every meeting is be involved. It's really good. I love when the council chamber is full because you're involved in your, your government, you're involved in communities. Mr. Nick says, unfortunately, that doesn't happen very often. But as, as the city manager said, there is a filing period if you wanna sit up here. It starts in a couple of weeks and, and, and your voice can, can be heard and you can be a part of those up here making decisions for the community. So it's a good, good time to be a Stephenville Yellow Jacket and a honeybee, and that's it.
In 1841, Louis Braille said, "We must be treated as equals and communication is the way that we can come about this, bring this about." And I just wanna mention that on January 4th today is World Braille Day. And there are a lot of people in the world who that's how they communicate. I'll just give you one little idea. The Webster's Underbridge Dictionary, if in Braille, is 72 volumes in size. That's how much more difficult it is for the visually impaired to be able to read. So we have several folks in this community. And my father is, has lost his sight, all but lost it. And it's, I can, I can tell you, I'm a little more sensitive to it. I encourage everybody to reach out and help somebody who's visually impaired tomorrow. With that, any other comments? It is 6:46, and the city council meeting will stand adjourned.